So this evening, we will begin with a public hearing, and then we are going to get into our regular meeting. So I will read the public hearing notice. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of Trustees in the Village of Tivoli on September 15th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. local time at Village Hall, 86 Broadway, Tivoli, New York, 12583, to hear all interested persons on the application for a community development block grant. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding the village's application. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Village Board of Trustees, Historic Washington Peister Hall, 86 Broadway, Tivoli, New York, 12583. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the village clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-757-2021, so that arrangements can be made by order of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli dated September 1, 2021. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the 2022 Community Development Block Grant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our public hearing is open. We would be interested in hearing from the public on what projects we ought to apply for, and we also will share our idea of what we are thinking of applying for. So I'll start with that unless anyone wants to go first. This is your hearing and mine. So the Village Board is considering putting in an application for the CDBG to replace the greatly deteriorated bluestone sidewalk, which runs from Kotsbon to St. Silves on the south side of Broadway. We believe that it's about 450 linear feet, and these grants, they award up to $250,000, and we think that's just the right first to complete this project. We've been working very hard for years now improving sidewalks around the village. We've done over 1,200 feet of sidewalk in recent years. So we would like to continue, and I think, you know, it's Klock Potts way. It is the link out to Kotsbon, which has been having a very good year. It is on the loop, or for the older folks, the big block. And it's also on the Empire State Trail. So for all these reasons, you know, we all know that this route now traveled. It is there, and it is not goo-shed. So an important thing about this is that it would not be replacing the bluestone. The bluestone would be removed, and it would be replaced with a more traditional concrete sidewalk and curb like you see in most of Tivoli. We have been in touch with Shippo, Deputy State Historic.
Well, now it's different. Now it's the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation.
Of Bush?
Yes.
Something different? The Historic State people. We've been in touch with them, and they encourage us to keep the bluestone and use it in other applications around the village. So we would be happy to do that. We've been doing that with the sidewalk out on West Road, which obviously ended up in our Elrod Park and other places. So that's our idea. Is there any questions about that or any other proposals? We'd be eager to hear that when I'm talking way too much during this public hearing. Clerk, for another time, do we open this hearing? Did you have a minute? I don't think I said what minute it was.
7:05.
7:05. Would you keep it open for at least two more minutes? Does he like our idea, Jeanette?
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
Good, well.
That's what you should do, I think.
The, I saw you clapping, that's why I put you on the spot there. The CDBG grant program is federal money that gets dispersed to counties, and then the counties disperse them to municipalities. And we get to compete with all our other municipalities in county. And Tivoli's had a pretty good track record. We probably get two every three years or so. It's a nice-sized grant for us because in Tivoli, 100 or 150K goes quite a long way. Can we do something? And other CDBGs we've done were Pine Street Phase 1 and 2, Lustup was in Phase 1, Sidewalk and Bioshale Phase 2. We, last year, we did a $100,000 project in the park. All the asphalt paths, redoing the asphalt, the pavilion, the interior, the bathrooms, other things. So we did crosswalks.
The theme of community transportation has been sort of whether it's making it a walkable village or providing access to public transport.
Yeah.
It's been the theme for years.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, last call for public comment before we close the hearing.
The sidewalk through the park makes such a big difference, especially in the winter when there's snow.
Great.
It's really, since it's raised, there's not the puddle in the middle. It's really nice.
Excellent, great. We've been trying very hard to keep it snowblown over the winter. I've done it myself several times.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. We gotta show off those new paths, you know. Trustees, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the 2022 Community Development Block Grant? Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our public hearing. Thank you all. Okay, it is 7:15 p.m., and I hereby call to order the September 2021 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Do the flag of the United States of America. Two republics, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Can you give a Village Clerk's report, please?
Yes, the past month, Treasurer Day has processed two fables. Lord Gale continues to assist the planning and zoning boards. 568 trash tags were sold. And on Monday, October 11th, the Village Clerk's office will be closed in observance of Tivoli Human Rights Court.
Okay, thanks very much. Trustees, approving some minutes from previous meetings. We have in our binders August 18th regular meeting, September 1st special meeting, and September 8th workshop next. Thank Clerk Brenna for putting these together. Is there a motion to approve the three sets of minutes?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Treasurer's Report. This month, out of the general fund, $42,054.33, and out of the capital fund, $57,116.68, for a grand total of $99,171.51. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nice when you can pay them. All in favor? Okay. We do have a zoning report that came in in time, right? Yeah.
Just me.
Nice little poke from the clerk always helps, so thanks for doing that. I think it should be in your binder, shouldn't it?
I guess, okay. Gary Beck has been busy this month. He reviewed three building permits, issued three building permits, dealt with three complaints, and received three complaints, investigated three complaints, issued 24 zoning property maintenance violations.
There you go.
I think that's a record. Issued no appearance tickets, undertook four municipal searches, undertook 14 inspections, and attended code enforcement training provided by Z3.
So his entity is actually called Z3?
Oh, okay.
He trains his people?
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Trustees Azarati. So, you know, this has been somewhat of a campaign since the early summer. I did announce via the Village email blast that we'd be doing code enforcement, taking kind of a block-by-block approach, although if you are troubled by something, don't wait for us to get to your block. Go ahead. It kind of helps to put the whole energy into one particular area and move our way around. It won't take us long to get all around the expansive village. If you have an issue with any kind of code enforcement or if you need a building permit or anything like that, you write bizio, B-I-Z-O, at tivoli.ny.org. I think we've been getting some great service. And some of the things that are being looked for are 911 numbers at your residence. There's been a county law on the books for quite a few years that we're excited about really getting caught up on. And it has to do with how large and where placed are your address numbers so that if there's a 911 call, those first responders can know where they are or not, or they aren't, make things easier for them. I sent out an email a couple of weeks ago about, like, information about the inch height of those letters and whatnot. So please, please do that. And if you have any questions about property maintenance, you know, you can write me or bizio, and we will help you out. Okay, moving on to public comment on agenda items only. I hope everyone who's attended had a chance to sign in and pick up an agenda. I'll just quickly, there's some on the back table there. I'll just quickly tell you what's on the agenda. We're going to accept the AUD, which is a giant financial report covering our entire last fiscal year, which we have to approve before we send it off to the state comptroller. We're going to establish Election Day and Election Inspector. And then we are classifying the type of action under secret and establishing a public hearing in case we need it for cannabis dispensaries. So I'll back up here just a little bit because it's a little confusing right now. We are going to hold a week from tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the pavilion outside. Hopefully, it won't be the same weather we're having tonight. A public forum. And for us, a public forum is not, it's more informal, casual. This is a chance for everyone to discuss the state law and this choice put by that law to all the municipalities whether to opt in or opt out of two things. On-site consumption establishments and cannabis dispensaries. So that's like a cafe where you could consume cannabis, or it's a shop where you can buy cannabis products, all kinds of things. I sent this out about our forum last week, and there's a document in what I sent out, which is very important. It's the most clear information that we have, and there's not a lot. It's about three pages, and it really is as much as we know about how this law could affect the community. There's a whole structure for taxation on the product, and, you know, one of the questions is how much revenue? Would it, could it maybe make for us versus other sorts of impacts that we think it could have? We really want to hear from the public. This is a big decision. So that's the forum. That's going to be our first chance to kind of jump into the topic as a community. If the board feels that the community wants to opt out, and what that means is, no, you can opt out of one of those two things or both. So say we opt out of both. We say, okay, we're not opting out. We only have until December 31st this year to make that decision. And when you opt out, you can opt back in at any time. You could do it next year, you could do it two years later. If you don't opt out now, before the 31st of December, you can never opt out. So we may find it's an attractive mechanism because it lets us take our time on this, maybe see how some other communities go. I know, for example, the town of Woodstock is all in, and they're like, they're opting in, dumb deal, they know what they want. I don't have a clear sense of what Tivoli wants myself. So I really encourage everyone to come on the 22nd next week. And then depending on where that goes, we are now setting a public hearing for the 13th of October, which will be here. And that is if we need it. If we decide, if you opt in, you don't have to do anything, and so it's automatic. But if you want to opt out, it's a law, and so you need a public hearing for law. So that's what this is, for that. Okay, a couple more things on the agenda. We, excuse me, Clerk Brenna, we're going to table the health insurance renewal for tonight. Still have some more questions on that. We're also going to establish the standard workday for all village positions. So it has to do with the New York State retirement system and how many hours constitute a retirement day in the eyes of the state. So it's a little different for our office personnel. That's clerk and treasurer, court clerk. Seven hours is a day. For the mayor, it's six hours is what we're proposing. And for DPW, it's eight hours. So for those of us, eight for Department of Public Works. With that for goes recap. Any comment from the public on agenda items? Okay, you'll get another chance at the end of the meeting, obviously, to talk about them or anything else. Trustees, AUD, we went over this in the workshop. I know Trustee Mangieri, excuse me, I have really blown it. We have a new trustee tonight. Emily, I have known you so long, and it's already so natural to have you here that I just plowed right on past this introduction, which I really regret now. There you go. Yeah, used to work with me sometimes, but I miss it. Emily Mangieri, I'm so thrilled that you have accepted my appointment to fill a seat left vacant by trustee Jean Anne Schneider. Emily is a long, long time resident of the village, and I've known you decades, and took some time to convince you to do this, but good things are worth waiting for, and so I'm just thrilled you've accepted.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Great to have you here. I think you're going to bring good stuff to this team that we've had, so welcome. All right. AUD, so we'll have some follow-up questions with the bookkeeper, but we went over this. The good news is the village's fund balance is still healthy. It did go up a little bit this year, went up about $80,000, and our fund balance is sitting at about $410,000, which is excellent. So we're thrilled with that. It's never something to take for granted. Rainy days do come, but it's nice that we have that money in the bank. And part of what happened this year, interestingly, is a lot of the dire predictions of depressed revenues due to the pandemic didn't come to pass, at least in this part of the world, where real estate's been doing quite well, so mortgage tax remained high and sales tax remained high. Other than that, it's just our regular old belt-tightening, penny-counting approach here. So with that, is there a motion to accept the AUD?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Congratulations.
Congratulations to us all, and congratulations to the Tivoli taxpayer, for sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We go to the binder. We have a motion establishing Election Day. Pursuant to Section 15-104.1B of the election law, a general election will be held on Tuesday, March 15th, the eye to march, 2022, at the Tivoli Firehouse in Tivoli, New York, between the hours of noon and 9:00 p.m. And this is one of our local village elections next March. The election will be to elect two trustees for terms of two years each. So our seats are staggered. For example, I'm in the middle of a two-year term, but two of you will be hopefully running again. So that's the election day, March 15th, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Establishing election inspectors. We will be appointing two election inspectors and one alternate for the same election. We are grateful to Mark Savino and Stacy Riley will be our election inspectors. And our alternate will be Jackie Zetko.
I think this is the first time since I've been here that you've had, no, because we had Margaret Millen, Lemon, and she was replaced. That's true.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the election inspectors?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's harder when we have a full board to do the motions and seconds. It got really easy.
Get into the room.
The meeting was just the three of us. That's very easy, right? Maybe a pack of papers. All right. Next, we have the resolution classifying the action and establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of local law, see, proposed 2021, a local law adopted pursuant to New York State Cannabis Law 131, opting out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries and on-site cannabis consumption establishments within the diligently. This is a public hearing if we need it. I want to be clear, we're setting a public hearing in the event we want to opt out. There's not been a decision made yet. We really need to hear from you. So remember, the forum next Wednesday, and then a possible public hearing on the 13th. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution, which classifies it as an unlisted action under secret and also sets the public hearing for the 13th at 7:00 p.m.? Trustee Baldino, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Azarati, any discussion? We do a roll call. Deputy Mayor Manger?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azarati?
Aye.
And Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
I also vote aye, okay. Public hearings there, tabling the health insurance renewal, and with laws, it'll be standard workday. The resolution proposes, be it resolved, that the village of Tivoli hereby establishes the following as a standard work, as standard workdays for the following elected and appointed officials, and will report the following days worked to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the clerk of this body. And we discussed this in the workshop. Again, standard workday for the position of mayor, six hours. Clerk, treasurer, court clerk, deputy court clerk, rec camp director, and rec camp counselors, who can actually choose to join the New York State power, is seven hours, and Department of Public Works, eight hours. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And the resolution is adopted, thank you all. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, October 30th? Excuse me, 20th. Wednesday, October 20th, at 7:00 p.m., received by workshop at 6:00 p.m. here at the Historic Washington Peister Hall. And we have a regular workshop on October 13th at 7:00 p.m. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Azarati.
I have some things to talk about. I would like to just go over, you know, it's been an amazing year in the stock market and our Lincoln Service Award program that provides a service award on the reaching the age of 65 to any active fire person in the village. That's the fund that we talked about having $211,000 in. It's actually up to $220,000 as of the end of August. So just like to report on its performance. We instituted this plan in 2008 with $30,000 of borrowed money. It was actually theoretically borrowed. It was just funded over time for the prior five years of service of existing members of the fire department. So we amortized that debt and actually paid some of it out. Klock Potts got his $5,000 on, let's see, 2020, even 1925. So about 40 years later, he received that payment for his service to the firehouse. And then anybody over 65 receives $500 a year. This program, our ambition was to invest it conservatively so as to protect the corpus of the money. And we invested it fairly conservative for the first five years. And then as the fund balance grew and we had certainty about being able to meet the annual demands of it, we went into a little bit more aggressive posture. Our ambition was to earn 6% a year. And I'm here to report that since its inception, the fund has earned 6.25% annually. So we've managed that over time. In the last, yeah, got to find my place here. But part of that is because in the recent years, we have had exceptional performance. In 2019, it was up 18%, and in 2020, it was up just under 10%. So it's, the timing of investing it more, a little more aggressively, has been good. The other thing is to say that we rely on RBC Wealth Management to manage these funds, and they're kind of a challenging fund to manage because you're expecting institutional management. $220,000 sounds like a lot of money, but for an investment manager, they have to be able to manage that with strategies that keep the fees low for what's really not that large a pot of money. And they have done that. They kept their costs low and have obviously given it attention because it has been invested as we wanted it, and they've been doing a good job.
Thank you, Trustee Albino.
So I will read the Village of Tivoli Justice Court. So this month, the total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, it's $200 in fines, $93 in surcharges, $25 in civil fees. The total is $313,000.
Thank you. Let's see, there are a lot of overnight parking, couple speeding, stop signs.
No backwards parking there. I was looking for that.
Those probably haven't made it to court yet, I'm guessing. Yeah, so for some very strange reason, we've been experiencing this rash of backwards parking, particularly on Montgomery Street and Spring Street, where someone is driving along, crossing the lane, and parking like against traffic. That's illegal. It's kind of goofy, but there have been times when I've driven down Montgomery Street and like every other car is backwards. And the reason that's illegal is because you're crossing against traffic. In fact, you're doing it twice properly when you park and when you take off. So there's no reason for it. We've been trying to get that. We used to put some tickets on those cars. It's just so goofy. So that's what we're referring to.
Hazard for bikers.
Hazard for bikers, and, you know, as I always say, with speeding or parking, Tivoli's cute. Take your time, go up, turn around in a proper place, and park the right way. You might see something luckily while you're doing it, you know. All right, so thank you, Trustee Baldino. So thank you, Trustee Baldino. Deputy Mayor Emily Major.
All right. There is so much going on at the library this month and also next. And I'm going to start out with something that is next month because I think there's quite a bit of reading involved. So there's an event called the Community Reading. It's a conversation about race. It's a collaboration among the Tivoli Free Library, the Morton Memorial Library in Rock Cliff, and Frederick Library and the Star Library. And it takes place on October twenty-sixth from seven to eight p.m. And this is inspired by students from Bard Lifetime Learning Institute's course, which is called Who Us? And in this, community members are encouraged to choose one or more of five suggested books and then come together to discuss how attitudes regarding race affect our daily lives. So for more information, you have to register for this. You need email amy@redhoodlibrary.org. And so the Tivoli Library all along is doing a bunch of stuff. September thirtieth, we have an event in the Ziro Music. It's five to six p.m. and it's a full music duo called Hungry Town. And not only is the band a draw, but also there will be cider. So cider season is upon us. Get ready. Something I'm really excited about the week of September twenty-sixth to October second is Band Book Week. So you can come in and check out any number of books that had previously been banned and celebrate the freedom to read. Museum passes are still available. These are a three-day checkout. You can go to Olana, you can go to Mass Moka. You can go to the Maritime Museum over in, on the Roundout Kingston, which is amazing. Like if you have ever wondered about, for example, the history of steamboats on the river, this is the place to go. And there is so much information and it's really cool. Also, the museum with firefighting up in Hudson. And you can also check out the New York State Empire Pass, which will get one vehicle full of people into any New York State park or recreation center. Eleanor Roosevelt, our own, her birthday is October fourteenth. And from six to seven p.m., there's going to be an online presentation by Jet Urban, who's the education director down at the FDR Library. He's going to do a presentation on Eleanor. There's a lot of never before seen photographs. And the advertisement for this specifically says you have to be eighteen. So I don't know what those photographs are. Anyway, worth registering in advance, but come to the library first and get a cupcake and a goody bag for the party. Historic Red Hook has some cool stuff going on. The next big event down there, meaning virtually, is called The History of Enslavement and Anti-Slavery in Dutchess County. And this is on Wednesday, September twenty-ninth at seven p.m. October first through thirtieth, this is a month-long event called Cemetery Crawl, which is going to be awesome. There's scavenger hunts set up and it's, and self-guided tours through some of the very cool cemeteries that we have throughout the town and the villages. So if you go to historicredhook.org, you can find out more about that. And then on October ninth, there is a, there's an event that's going to start three p.m. at the Methodist Church Cemetery in Red Hook. It's behind the Elmendorf Inn down on Cherry Street. And it's a sign unveiling. You know, those blue and yellow education park signs. So this one is in honor of Alexey Dergilson, who was an African-American horticulturalist who lived at Montgomery Place. And when he retired from Montgomery Place, he moved into the village of Red Hook. And he had, he had a nursery business there and greenhouses out on River Road in Barretown. And he ran a business there in the village. And there is a species of begonias that is named after him. And so he and his mother and his sister are all buried in the Methodist Cemetery there. And Historic Red Hook, in collaboration with Bard, worked really hard to, to get this sign to the Palmer Foundation, commemorating, you know, his life and achievements. So three o'clock at the Methodist Cemetery. The event goes until five. There's going to be music on the Elmendorf Grief with Dan Budd's band, Grass Fed, and they're really terrific. Clermont, put on your calendar, Sunday, October third. I couldn't get a lot of details about this, but they're having an event called the Fierce First Lady's Story Hour, which just sounds like it couldn't be bad. So October third at two p.m. The last thing I have to say, and this is probably the most exciting thing that I've ever said as a trustee, the frigging canoe launch is done. It's open. Now go down to Tivoli Bay with your boat. And there's this beautiful like stairs all the way down. There's a ramp that you can slide the boat on. And then this dock that, I mean, you could, you could bring the Queen Mary up next to it. It's amazing. So.
We'll have to go on the Panarca to find the last board meeting at which you could talk about this thing being there. It's probably.
It's like four years ago. So let's see, Little Street Painted, do you know?
All right. Let me see. Well, I'm going to start with Trustee Vangieri. And again, welcome. And we're back. We, board members are going to have to pass around the bailiwick's once again and figure out, you know, we'll talk about what domains you want to, you know, take the lead on as we do. But I'm glad you're here. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I am honored to be here. It's something that I did, you know, put some thought into, serious consideration. And so I'm glad that I accepted the position and I look forward to working with everybody and helping keep Tivoli cool.
Nice. I believe you have a trustee email. If you could tell everybody how to get in touch with you, your constituents.
Yes, I believe it's villagetrustevangieri@gmail.com.
All right. Well, thank you, Ellen. So far, we've done okay tonight with two MLNs. I've been worried about receiving how that goes. Keep my brain sharp. Let's see. Trying to do this in some order. Saturday, this Saturday, we are going to have, there's so much going on the coming weekends. So nine a.m. is a benefit 5K run race. You can also walk here in Tivoli. Starts at nine a.m. Registration will be in the park. For a month now, I've been sending out on the Village Gmail blast the registration information, but I believe you can still register day of. I think we're around twenty-eight or thirty runners. This is to raise money for children's cancer research. And it's been organized by a wonderful person named Mary Shaw from, I think she's from Rhinebeck. She's a marathoner, does a lot of running for charities. And asked me a few months ago if she could do one in Tivoli. So it's basically the route is going to be around the loop. We'll start them at the firehouse. Westward on Clark Potts Way, turn onto Woods Road, snake around the development. It's going to be some tricky turns and crossing of Lothrup and Green Tree. And then back out, finish the loop, sand stacks down North Road, Pine Street, finish up in the park. So that's Saturday morning. There's a number of people volunteering and I want to thank them for helping us. And that very afternoon, when we're done here in Tivoli, the village board will be over at Hardscrabble Day in the Village of Red Hook. We're always thrilled to be invited and we will get to march in the parade, which starts at three. I believe there's live music at five. The theme this year is the apple, but more importantly, the agricultural roots and heritage and community as symbolized by the apple. It's not just about the apple. It's about agriculture. So we'll be over there on the afternoon of the eighteenth. The next day, Sunday nineteenth, is the Tivoli Fire Department Chicken Barbecue. I don't know if there's any chicken left. They generally sell out at this point, but that'll be going on. And the following weekend, the twenty-fifth, is Tivoli Street Painting. We're up in the low twenties, right? Twenty-something? I think the first one was.
Oh, this is twenty.
This is twenty?
This is twenty.
The first one was two thousand and one? So this is actually twenty.
It's, it's actually twenty-one years since the first one. The first one was in two thousand and one, but we skipped one.
We skipped one last year, right?
As soon as this one's toned down, maybe this is like twenty.
A point five.
Or like nineteen point five.
So.
Let's get it right.
The twenty-fifth, ten to two. It's going to be a toned down COVID-conscious event this year. It's not going to be, we're not blowing out all the stops. We're going to have half the number of squares and they're going to be staggered along the streets. There's a lot more opportunity for spacing. There will be music. There will be chalk. Anything I'm missing? We have new leadership now, right? April Marsh.
April Marsh is killing it.
April Marsh is killing it. So grateful to have her. Anything else you want to say on street paint?
Anybody who would like to volunteer to, you know, help put up, you know, parking signs a couple days before? That would be great. Or to help with laying out the squares on Saturday morning? That would be great. You can just reach out to me on email at deputymajor@gmail.com. And thank you to Truce Burke and the Red Hook LPW for, for coming to sweep the street. Because without that, it's a mess.
Rough words.
It's real, real work.
Thank you to Superintendent Burke for getting over here and sweeping. It's a tough, tough time, tough year, but that'll be great. Let us, let us go on to our street painting event. Let me see, where am I? Okay. So that is the twenty-fifth. The twenty-sixth is the wet down ceremony for the Tivoli Fire Company. We've got some posters around the village. You probably can't see it here on my little card, but there's a million dollars worth of brand-new trucks on here. This is our new ambulance and our new pumper. Their numbers are sixty-six seventy-one and sixty-six thirty-one. These are the vehicles that replaced the ones we lost in the July fifth, 2019 fire. They're in service. The fire department is trained up on them. I know there's quite a lot of training when you get these new vehicles. They have a lot of bells and whistles. And what a wet down ceremony is, is other fire companies will be coming to Tivoli that day and they, I believe, spray our vehicles with their hoses. It's sort of like christening a ship or something. There are going to be, let's see, food beverages, raffle prizes and new merchandise. And it will also be, I hope I'm not spilling the beans. It's going to be the official launch of the Tivoli Firehouse Expansion Campaign. I guess I'm not spilling the beans. It's on the card. So, you know, we have one of the most dynamic, vibrant and growing fire companies anywhere around. It is a blessing. And they are squeezed into a building from nineteen eighty-five, which doesn't have showers, for example. So when you come back from a fire and you're covered in all that toxic stuff, you go home to your family and shower in your own shower. It's not how we should be doing things in 2021. So there's a lot more equipment in, in fire service these days. And we need more space. So we are going to be pushing a campaign to raise about three million dollars to expand the firehouse. And you can learn a lot more about it on the twenty-sixth at the wet down. It should be fun. All right. And Tivoli, in partnership with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, were successful in winning a $50,000 grant. This is for a generator which will eventually serve the new sewer plant. So it's been going on for a long time. We've been talking about water, but just a brief update on the sewer plant. Tivoli Sewer Plant is so far gone that we're going to replace, not rebuild. That should be happening over the next year. We're waiting on some state funding that we won. Loan and zero interest, excuse me, zero interest loan and grant. But $50,000 of that price tag is now covered because it was going to need a new generator and we got a grant for it. So congratulations to us. I want to take just a second and recognize the Village of Tivoli Department of Public Works, particularly in this moment, being led by Ralph Torshid Jr. Jimmy Simmons has been out. He had surgery on his leg and he's been recovering. It's quite a long recovery. I know he's fielding phone calls and still doing a little bit of work from the couch, but he has to off his foot. So Ralph Torshid Jr., Josh Sella and Philip Chrissy is working with us part-time. I hope you've noticed they're just doing a great job. They're everywhere out there and anticipating certainly my to-do list half the time before I mention it to them. And, you know, there's, you've got to make hay while the sun shines. There's a lot of work to do in the summer and they've been working really hard. So I just really want to recognize those gentlemen for the great work they're doing. And before we open it to public comment, you know, we are, we've been so many months now in COVID operations. And, you know, it's just hard to stay connected to, to residents, the citizens, our constituents. So I just want to remind everyone that even though we, we haven't been pushing a lot of big events, you know, we've been sparing with our public hearings because we want to be thoughtful about getting everybody in the room and, you know, trying to do this forum over in the park outdoors. So we've been meeting outside a bit. I just want to, you know, ask folks to help us stay connected to you. And the two best ways are sign up for the Village Gmail. Go to our, you know, Google Village of Tivoli, go to the website, halfway down on the left side of the homepage, put in your email address, it'll be added to the list. It's my number one way of communicating with, with you. And you can write us, call us, all our information's on the website anytime. And, you know, we kind of have to be agile and strategic and be safe. So I just love meeting with people out in the gazebo down here or taking a walk in the park or whatever you might be comfortable with. You don't want to come sit in my office. Happy to meet you anywhere. But we, we really need to stay connected. And I have certainly been feeling, I think I probably speak a little bit for my colleagues here. It's hard to do this job during COVID. It really is because the sorts of things we used to be able to do, a hundred people in this room talking about chickens or noise or something. Those things really help us do a good job and we have been able to do them. So please do what you can. I'd love to, to hear from you. With that, we will open the floor to public comment on any topic. Kathy O'Connor.
Thank you, Joel. I'd like to ask Susan, and I, I suspect you might not have the answer right off, but I am confident that you could investigate and make a determination as to how much of the, the pot that's invested for the fire people might be invested in companies that exploit fossil fuels.
Okay.
As, and, and if, you know, I would, I would, I personally would want you to, that would be wonderful, but, you know, I don't, I don't want you to endanger the investment there. But perhaps as a village, we might consider future new investments would not be allocated to such companies.
I will just comment that it would be difficult because this fund achieves diversification by investing in different asset classes. It does not invest in individual securities. So in order to get that diversification, it's buying either ETFs or indexes of an asset class like international stocks, which is created. Those, those kinds of investments don't tend to sort through securities for their exposure to fossil fuel. We can talk to them about it. I'll be happy there. There may be fossil fuel free index funds. I can tell you that they will be more expensive in terms of fees. And there may be a cost in terms of return, but I'm looking. And there may be a cost in terms of return, but I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Please. It's so nice to have some people here. Go for it.
So, you're gonna have a forum about cannabis. And I wonder if we might take advantage. You could only say no, but our neighbor across the river, Jan Metzger, I think is, is the appointed guru on this topic for, for the state. So, if she would find a half an hour for us to come over and discuss the ramifications, possibilities of it, let's ask.
Okay. We can think about that. I mean, we wanna hear from the Tibbly residents about whether they want it or don't, but to have an expert present could be awful. Yeah. Other public comment? And, you know, whether it's next Wednesday or not, I mean, I think, you know, we're gonna take some time. It's gonna be several weeks of research and investigation. And I'm sure we'll gather questions, you know, from the forum and try and get answers. There'll probably be some kind of a fact, frequently-asked questions type thing developed. So, what is her role in...
I just read that she was appointed by the governor to, you know, be the lead investor.
To understand what's going on.
Implementation or, you know, various aspects of it. I have one more comment.
Sure.
I think that we should acknowledge the absence of a longstanding village presence at this meeting so that it goes into the meeting, into the minutes of the meeting, how the village has changed since our last meeting.
I wish it was daylight and we could see the absence of water tower.
There you go.
Oh, yeah. I had that right here, number three, water tower down. But then the street painting curveball threw me off my level. So, I'm glad you brought it up. Yes, let's all, that seems like a really nice place to end the meeting, right? Yeah. The 1938 water tower has been removed. How do you feel about it, Kathy?
I, I'm, I think it's done its job. I'm, I'm, it lends such beauty and inspiration to the village. And it's, it's, the time has passed and I'm so grateful that we have new facility up on Monument Hill.
Yeah. Thank you. That's good. I would've kicked myself if I hadn't, if we hadn't talked about it. So, you saved me there, Kathy. It's been nice how quickly it actually ended up coming down, although the takedown was postponed for weeks and weeks throughout to some of various things. It was great we put it off until after the Children's Rite Camp. I think that was great. And, yeah, change is how things happen.
Well, I think we have to acknowledge that had it been for, you know, that tower. We talked about the tower as being the sort of visible symbol of the system. You know, Tibbly would be, you know, it wouldn't be where we are now, right? We would've probably been subsumed into the town, right? But without, without the revenue from, you know, restaurant that we could have, you know, as a result of that, you know, it would, it would be harder for us to have maintained, you know, independence, right? And to grow as we did over the past 83 years, so...
And speaking of growth, the new tower, which fortunately looks similar enough to the old one that we don't have to change, you know, the t-shirts, the hats, the handle, the wonderful handle. It's twice the amount of water up there. It's 300,000 gallons. So, whatever growth is left around here, we're, we're set for it. And certainly, when it comes to these people, having the new water main and all that water is just great from a fire protection standpoint, which I'd love to ask you to talk about preservation and how a water system and a fire department are linked to preservation in a community with architecture such as ours.
Oh, well, we are a substantially one-framed village. You know, most, yeah, I would say probably the majority of our buildings date to about, I mean, at least the historic district, date to about 1860, 1870. And, you know, without adequate fire flow, we could lose that in a heartbeat. So, it's, you know, the two things are extraordinarily linked. And, I mean, the four corners, except for the Santa Fe corner. The other three corners all burned to the ground between 1870 and 1910. So, it can, you know, happens quick.
It has happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, Jeanette.
Is there a plan for the space for the water tower one?
There is no plan at this time. I think it's fair to say that half the people in this village have an idea. I've heard many of them. They're, they're multifarious. They range from tennis court, swimming pool, park, sculpture, you know, put the playground equipment up there, out of the puddles, put it on the high ground, like, all sorts of stuff. So, there's no plan yet. My personal feeling as a person and as mayor is like, let's give it a while and wait and see what we feel and how we think. There's no reason to rush that. You know, we all have to get used to the cavity in space that's over there for a bit. And the one thing I'll tell everyone who has an idea for that space is there is still a significant water line that runs from Pine Street under that hill over to Memorial. So, whatever may end up on there, if there were ever a problem with that pipe, it's gonna get cut in half and drilled through. So, for example, tennis court, swimming pool, you know, something to keep in mind in whatever would go there. Do you, do you have an idea? If you're curious. It's, it's been a topic. I've heard lots of people ask or lots of people offer their, their ideas, so...
Ball pit. Giant ball pit.
Like any?
Like Chuck E. Cheese cannon.
I wasn't sure that's actually a gaga ball, which is a bigger gaga ball. I've had to play that quite a bit. It's kinda fun. I was able, I ran into Karen Cranna at, at his job last week and I was able to tell him that the, the gaga ball court was the biggest, greatest thing ever to come to the children of Tibbly. I mean, we couldn't get him out of there all during the record program. They just wouldn't even leave the thing. They loved it so much. So, it was really nice to be able to tell them that. That was his Eagle Scout project. Any other comments?
I did just have one, or two comments, actually, in regards to the DPW and how good the village looks. Because I had mentioned to you when we met that it looks great. But at the new water tower site, I honestly thought that it was just gonna be a tower sitting there and up on the hill. But it's really beautiful when you walk by and all the daffodils and everything. Where the three stones are, it's just been super immaculate lately that you could just see that, you know, the guys are on top of it. And most recently, there was an accident outside the house that there was a local involved. And I have to say that always, in the 35-plus years I've lived here, that Tibbly Fire Department shows up within minutes, with even less than that. And this accident happened. And always, whenever I hear something, I call 911. And, I mean, I would have to say that this time it was under two minutes. There was a new, I was a young woman from the fire department. She was on scene. She was like ready. She was already doing first aid. And I was blown away at like, just impressed that like, they were on it. And like, there was no worry after I made that call. Like, oh my gosh, are they gonna come? You know, because it's such a busy intersection that, you know, you, you don't want it to be any more unsafe than it already is due to an accident. So, I do commend the fire department for that. I thought, I was like, wow, they are really all, like, all in. And everybody showed up to that because there was quite a lot of debris on the road. And it was taken care of really quickly. And it was a good job done by the DPD.
Yeah, that's great. Can I re-thank them enough? All right. I put on motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Do you have trustee Mangeri be honored to second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 808. Thank you, everyone.